Okay, I'll call to order the Town of Roseville Regular Meeting. This is February the fourth, 2025. Want to thank everybody in attendance tonight. Appreciate that. We got a few items to cover, so I'm kind of looking forward to covering some business here. So appreciate, appreciate everybody being here. I think Christina is out. She's not here, but she's battling illness. So with that, we will first rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll stay, if you would stay standing from Lighthouse Baptist Church. Pastor Jason Byer will lead us tonight, sir.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious Heavenly Father, we do thank you again for your love and your mercies. Thank you for the privilege and opportunity we have to live in a land where we are free and to serve you and live according to the dictates of our conscience. We thank you for this town and for the mayor and these people that serve on the board, the town board, and we just pray for your help and wisdom for them tonight in this meeting and give them wisdom and direction and help them to lead a way that's pleasing to you. Father, we thank you for our pleas and for the service they are to our community and keeping us safe and protecting us. And Father, we pray that you'd watch over them and protect them and keep them safe and help them in their work, and we just thank you for them. We thank you for your love and your mercies, and we thank you for this meeting tonight. We pray that you would just guide and direct and have your will and way, and we'll thank you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. And again, that's Lighthouse Baptist Church here in Roseville, so thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate that. Okay, a few items. First of all, we will review the agenda. If there's any items on the agenda you would like to move or pull, this is the time. If not, entertain a motion for agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose. Thank you very much. I do have a proclamation. This is February, and February ever since nineteen seventy-six, I believe, February is always recognized as Black History Month, and we recognize it here in Roseville. So we annually do a proclamation and dedicate some, I guess, some time and activity to that. I know my show this, this month is dedicated to Black History, and we have New Bethel Baptist Church, which is a, I think that church is probably a hundred and twenty-five, thirty years old, I believe. How old is it, Linwood? Do you know?
Hundred and forty-plus.
Hundred and forty-plus, so. Linwood's father passed at that church for how many years, Linwood?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So, but it's, it's really kind of an icon church here in Roseville. So they are on the show, plus a couple individuals from Jonesville Community, and some of you may know where Jonesville Community is. So, so if you are able, kind of find the show on the Internet and appreciate, appreciate you watching it. So proclamation of the Town of Roseville, Black History Month 2025. Whereas much of the Town of Roseville honor, strength, stature will be attributed to the diversity and cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the residents of this great town, and whereas African-Americans have played a significant roles in the history of North Carolina economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their culture and history, and whereas as a result of their determination, hard work, perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to the Town of Roseville and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and arts. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black History throughout our American experience, which goes back thousands of years, includes some of the greatest, most advanced, most innovative societies in our history that we have drawn to inspire from. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build this nation, took a stance against prejudice and built lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the cause of civil rights and strengthened the families and communities, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future to continue to improve society so we live up to the ideals and freedoms of equality and justice. Therefore, it is to be our resolve that Ronnie Kern, Mayor of Roseville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month. So, so thank you. Any comments from the board?
Not at this time.
All right. Well, thanks. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is supposed to be heard. I think we have one person signed up. I believe that's right. Steve Rau from Town of Morrisville, long-term commissioner. How long, come and introduce yourself, Steve, and how long were you in Commissioner and Marshall?
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Steve Rau, councilmember. I've served as Mayor part-time, and this is my fourteenth year serving the Town of Morrisville, so I'm the second most senior person in the council, additional, with Johnson. But it's great to be in Roseville. I wish I could have taken the commuter rail here, but we don't have it yet, so maybe one day. Hopefully the Commissioner.
Maybe one day. We don't have rails, though, so it's kind of hard.
Took me a while to get here, but I'll be real quick. I know I have three minutes, but I came here today. I want to thank Commissioner Long for also inviting me, and he has a technology background, so Commissioner, thank you. And the main reason I came today was to, I'm getting around Wake County to talk about, I wrote an article about a year and a half ago called "Making North Carolina a Smart State," and then, you know, talking about smart cities and also how we can make Wake County a smart county. And basically, smart city is a very complex term for how we leverage technology and data and sensors, what they call the IOT, Internet Things, to enhance the quality of life for our residents. So I wanted to just take a minute today to talk to you about what Morrisville's been doing, and it's really not rocket science, and it doesn't cost a lot of money, but a couple of years ago, we came up with a smart city plan across all our departments. We hired a garden firm to come in and do an assessment across departments, and then we ended up creating a smart city advisory committee. And what we did was we would put sensors in our parks. So like when I was a kid, when I was taking my kids to go play soccer many, many years ago, whenever it rained, it's a flood plain in Morrisville, we would have to wait, call the warning number, nobody would know, but now the gates automatically shut, staff members are notified, citizens, we have a mobile app that get notified that the fields are wet and they're closed. We can also manage facility usage. If you take your kids to play pickleball or tennis or soccer, you can now actually look and say, all those courts are taken, so you can save your time, and we're looking at doing that inside our gem. We're also leveraging generative AI, which is the word of the day for searchability of documents, and kind of cute, the new chatbot that we have is going to be called Morris the Cricket, because if, I would invite all of you to come to see Major League Cricket play in Morrisville. It's a really fascinating thing. And this is all how we're using technology to make life easier for our residents. The other thing, I know your Economic Development Director's here, my last minute, there is an economic development component, because what we've seen in Morrisville is these entrepreneurs come and they, they actually help us solve problems, and then they do well, and they hire, and there's an organization called Riot led by a guy named Tom Snyder. He's got a big event this Thursday that actually talks about how we can incubate these startups, and so they've had a lot of jobs being created, you know, more than just like the incentives we provide, but small companies that go from ten employees to twenty employees to thirty employees, and Secretary of State and Marshals reminded all of us just a few weeks ago that for every small business that grows by even, you know, fifteen, five percent, that creates about twenty-five thousand jobs in North Carolina. So imagine what we could do across the counties. So I came today just to share with you at a really high level, because I think that as a county, we're not doing a good enough job sharing these best practices, and as we deploy Ting and broadband and high speed, especially from, you know, Governor Cooper, I think brought in about a billion dollars, he implemented, now the new Governor Stein is continuing that, we should also have smart cities to create jobs and things like that. So that's really my update. I want to, I'll follow up with Commissioner Long and the mayor to come out. I'm doing a smart city tour where I'm going to every city in the county to talk about how we can do this to just have more vibrant economy, and so I know my time is up, but I hope I gave you something to learn from, and it's always great to be in a great town.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. See, any questions? I know this is a little bit odd, but being that he's one of us, you know, just a different town. Any questions for Steve while he's here?
One question to anything.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming, coming out. Appreciate.
No questions. I did my job. There are the chapters.
There you go. So thanks, and I guess I'll follow up, you know, a lot, he talked about smart cities had to do with parks and stuff like that, and I know we got several projects, Eric, with parks, you know. We got the project with the new, two new parks coming, one on Roseville Road and, you know, the main, the big park out there, and I think we're doing a project at the Main Street Park, and also I think we're doing a project at the one we put, yeah, Mule Bridge. So, you know, incorporating some of those things in the park would be ideal, probably, so.
I forgot to mention that we got a national award, the Town of Morrisville got a national award, the Global CIO Supposing Award, and we presented the Digital Innovation Award, so it's a great way to showcase the thing. I'm going to be working with Commissioner Long, because I think these kinds of things easily be developed in Roseville and across the county.
Thank you. You had to get that little brag in there, D and D. There you go. All right, thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming out, Steve. Appreciate that. Next item, I don't think anybody else has signed up to speak. So next item is consent agenda. As you see, we got several items on there, approval of the minutes from January seventh, Wake County Fire Inspection Agreement. That's kind of an ongoing thing that we just have to do agreement updates. Resolution accepting community project funding grant, consideration of the Roseville Fire Department consolidation agreement. I think we covered that pretty much detailed a couple of weeks ago. Yes. Maybe last week, and then the twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment, which Amy has in there, which is just a few minor items. But it's up to the pleasure of the board. As always, we can pull one item, discuss further if you prefer, or we can approve the consent items slate. So what is the, what's the recommendation from the board?
Move to approve to consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. Commissioner Austin, veterans, any laser report?
Yes, sir. Ms. Daphne Moore from the Office of Congresswoman Ross informed me about a webinar that is happening on February twelfth at thirteen hundred hours virtually. The Department of Veterans Affairs will be having an employment webinar series hosted by the Vocational Readiness and Employment, known as VRNE. This virtual event will teach you about the Vocational Readiness and Employment Program and the changes that were made by the new administration. The Federal Benefits for Veterans Dependents Devapers and Caregivers 2025 Edition is available on our town's website, thanks to Ms. Candace, under the Veteran Resources, and I have some copies that I will be placing in the foyer as well, in case some of the veterans would like a hard copy. And you also can go by the nearest VFW or DAV for a hard copy as well. The Joe Fund had their family studio on Sunday, February second, from fourteen to sixteen hundred hours. The event was for military-connected families with children. The families took home their crafts that they made, and all the kids had a great time there. And the Joe Fund will be having their Veterans Coffee Connection on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth at zero eight-thirty. And the last thing is from retired Lieutenant Colonel Clark, informing me that everything is going well with the setup for the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps for Roseville High, and the start date is still on board, set for July first this year. And definitely, see my report, sir.
That's great. Sounds really good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
How about Commissioner Long, public safety? Any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board members. I have very few comments. Police Department, our public safety lead, Chief, will be here to give the police a report. I do want to just share progresses moving forward with our Roseville Fire Department after our unification, and that is the hard work of town manager, town attorney, obviously the fire department, and all the staff. Wanted to also continue to just give them a shout of kudos for their hard work in pulling that off and continue to move that forward. As a, as a, as a follow-up for the community, I think it's important that we also acknowledge the hard work that the police are putting into keeping us safe. We are still in the top ten in regards of one of the safest cities in the country or excuse me, in the state, and what I like to encourage is that we continue to keep it that way with our citizens. As we have exposed to vandalism across this town, we need to make sure that we are telling one another how we keep everyone on a higher standard in Roseville. We want to make sure that our standards do not lose sight of that. So if you see a crime, report it. Our police here to help and support, and please don't let there be anyone come in our town and take over what we do best, and that is our charm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner Paul, senior citizen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm pleased to, pleased and proud to announce that the Senior Network has purchased a bus.
Oh, good.
Over thirty local businesses and many golfers, supporters, and volunteers help raise the funds for the bus. It can carry fourteen passengers and has a wheelchair lift. So expect to see it traveling the streets, streets in our town, taking seniors to various appointments very soon. The Senior Network will host an unveiling of the bus on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth in the Town Community Center from noon to two. Refreshments will be provided and local media will be in attendance. Right, Matt?
Oh, yeah.
The Senior Advisory Committee meeting was postponed until February twelfth. At that time, our guest speaker will present his proposal for a senior center. I will report on that after the meeting, so stay tuned on that. We're all anxiously awaiting the selection of a winner for the land behind our town hall for an affordable housing project. We look forward to hearing more in the coming weeks. Finally, the month of February is loaded with events for our senior community. The Senior Network has ten events scheduled this month, and our own Parks and Rec Department has several neat trips scheduled. So check out the Senior Community page on the town website and the Senior Network website, which is theseniornetwork.org. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good job. About parks, Rick. Commissioner Bill, do you got anything?
Yeah, so our meeting was canceled because of the weather, but I did want to put a, something out there for the Historic Roseville Society. They're going to be holding an event on March first, starting at noon, to celebrate the two-hundredth anniversary of Lafayette's Farewell Tour, which took place in eighteen twenty-four to eighteen twenty-five. He stayed at the Rogers Inn, which was just outside of Roseville, and there'll be more information coming out. It'll be on their Facebook page. If you get on Facebook and look up Historic Roseville, it'll be on there as well, hopefully the town will share that as well. So I'm looking forward to that. That's, again, March first, starting at noon.
Yeah, yeah, I heard about that. Okay. With that, I think we'll have some communications from the Chief of Police, Dave Simmons. Thank you, David. How are you tonight?
Doing good. Hope everyone is well. Thank you. It's been a little while since I've been up here, so thank you for allowing me to come back and give you a few updates on the police department, what's been happening over the last quarter. I'll jump right into our, I've talked about this a couple of times, but I wanted to kind of let y'all know where we were in the process of trying to become accredited for our agent, our department. The accreditation is through the North Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation. Here are the steps listed that we have to go through to become accredited, and currently we're on step two of the self-assessment. So we're reviewing and revising existing policies to ensure that we're operating under best practices. That is going to take some time, because we have several policies, a couple hundred to be, and around, around about that range. So Katie is working with several members of the organization of NCLEA and some other counterparts in the county to be able to get this completed, along with my staff and myself, to be able to update our policies. Once we complete that, they'll be gathering the proofs for compliance, there'll be a mock assessment, they'll come in and prepare us prior to the assessment to make sure we're well-prepared, and then the last part will be an off-site electronic file review of all of our policies, and then an onsite visit to include interviews and ride-alongs with, with my staff. This, we have twenty-four months, and we are in month four of this process since we have applied, so we still have several months left prior to this. We're working diligently, and I, I'm confident that we will finish this process well before the deadline. So as that comes, I'll be updating the manager and, and you all as well on the process. The accreditation, once, once we're awarded, hopefully, is, is valid for thirty-six months, and then we have to go back and repeat steps two through four. And then that's repeated every three years in order to retain this accreditation. I know some of y'all have probably heard of Kalia, and the standards that are in this, in NCLEA are, they mirror Kalia's policy. However, this is our state offering it us for free. All of their assessors, or majority of their assessors, to my knowledge, are Kalia assessors as well, or they're involved with the Kalia accreditation program in some shape or form, so they've been offering assistance to us. So we're excited. It's, it's a lot of work to get to the end game, but we're going to, my staff is dedicated and myself to make sure we get this done in a timely manner. I'm going to move on to some stats. I wanted to kind of show y'all kind of how we look from twenty-three to compare to twenty twenty-four. I haven't been before y'all, before the end of the year. This is everything, and I'm going to start big, and I'm going to kind of drill down a little bit closer into stats of how we're looking at it. Sorry to stink. If you look, we, we went up approximately forty-six hundred calls for service. Now, this includes everything. This is traffic stops, security checks, if somebody called about a bark-in-dog call, a loud music call, everything is incorporated into, this is all the calls for service that we receive, self-initiated and anything generated by the public. So we, we did almost a five thousand increase. This works out to be an average of ninety-two calls per day and four per hour. So we're definitely seeing the effects of some of the growth and traffic that we have in here, and I'll show you some more of that as we move on. Here's the drilling down a little bit further. If you'll look, starting to the left, we have the part-one crimes, part-two crimes, the arrests were down, crashes were up slightly, and then a number of reports filed were up, and then security checks were up. This is, the part-one and part-two crimes, is everybody pretty familiar with those, or do you need me to explain?
Please explain.
Part-one crimes are your more serious offenses to include murder, rape, aggravated assault. Your part-two crimes are a little bit less serious offenses. They are simple assault, drug offenses, vandalism, DUI, prostitution. Those are usually tracked by arrest, whereas the other ones are always reported. Part-one crimes are more severe and always reported. Part-two crimes are tracked mainly through arrests, so they're not always reported. That's, that's the main difference between the two.
So is Miss Aminas considered part-two, or?
Yes, sir.
That's kind of the slang term, I guess, Miss Aminas.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's right. Little, little bit less serious criminal, what they consider criminal offenses. But I thought we fared pretty good, twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-three. And then we'll drill down a little bit further into the part-two crimes, what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor. Some of our drug arrests were down, simple assaults were down. We were up on fraud. We had, this is becoming, as y'all know, with people calling and saying, hey, I'm with the police department, or I'm with the Wake County Sheriff's Department, and we have a bench warrant for your arrest, we will not arrest you, or I have a loved one down here, and they've been arrested, I won't arrest you if you'll come down here, or if you'll go to your local Walmart, and if you'll get some cards and put some money on it and send it to me, or through Bitcoin or some, some type of fraud. We have definitely seen it increase in that, and we've, we've seen it affect our senior population. So one of our goals this year is to try to get information to our seniors, working through maybe with the network and Commissioner Paul, to let them know and become more aware of these, because they're definitely targeting our elderly populations who are more vulnerable to jump right on, get in the car, you know, they get scared when they get these phone calls, they'll, they'll run right down to the store to get these, these cars. run right down to the store to get these cars to send these people money. And for the most part, you know, vandalism's up, weapons, when that says weapons, that could be where we're stopping vehicles. That's not saying it's actually a weapon, where a weapon was used, but it's stopping cars and we're recovering where somebody didn't have a, they had a concealed weapon, and they didn't have a concealed carry permit to be able to have that weapon concealed. So we have seized numerous weapons through CCW violations throughout 2024. Sex offenses are down. DWI's remain the same. That's an area we're going to try to increase, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Disorderly conduct is down. I will say, from the first quarter of the, so we have to include stats that come from the high school. That's our school. We take the reports. We make the arrests. We'll draw the juvenile petitions for any of those that may be necessary. So we take those stats. We own them. And this year was the first time in, I want to say Detective Sergeant said in three years, that we had the lowest first quarter stats. I don't like saying it out loud, but we had the lowest first quarter stats than we've had in three years, I think, at the high school. So we're making some progress over there.
Dave, cybercrime, is that part embedded in this, or we have a cybercrime? I know Steve would like that question, but cybercrime, do we...
That's probably under the all other offenses.
All others?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's down this year by a few, so we're glad. So we're looking good to hopefully maintain the top 10 that Commissioner Long, you know, mentioned earlier, or do better, and creep back into at least the top five for the state. Moving on, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with, I know some of us have heard of the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. Commissioner Long reports out sometimes because we'll put these stats out. If we're participating in some type of campaign that they're, that they have going on, whether it's DWI, a seatbelt campaign. We don't only participate with them here in Roseville, so we're a Wake County coalition, so to speak. So if Kerry calls and they say, hey, we want to do a large campaign, we're having trouble in this area of US1 Highway or Mooresville, they'll send a request to me, and then we'll filter it down, and we'll send staff over there to assist with any of these campaigns. But I'm excited. One thing that they do is they offer a calendar, a GHSP calendar. It goes all across the state of North Carolina. Agencies from all across the state, they submit photos to be in this calendar, and our photo was, this photo was selected this year to be on the month of August. It features our, one of our newest officers, Officer Kenyon, of him conducting a traffic stop near the bypass. Also with that, we have also applied. We've applied for a grant through the Governor's Highway Safety Program this year. That grant is to establish two dedicated traffic officers for the town to enhance roadway safety. I know y'all have seen the increased traffic load, and I know y'all get the complaints of people speeding, whether it's in a neighborhood subdivision, the bypass, whatever the case may be. I know y'all get it probably as many as I do as well. So we felt that this was a good year for us to apply, to be able to get some assistance from the state, to continue to support traffic safety initiatives here in Roseville.
Just to be clear, you said two additional traffic safety officers, period? That would be their focus?
That would be their focus. The grant is very specific to that. Obviously, if somebody needed help, they would be able to go help, but they would not be, their primary responsibility wouldn't be to answer calls for service. They would be dedicated to traffic enforcement in and around Roseville and the county, as I had mentioned before. Now, when we send somebody, you know, to Kerry or Mooresville, wherever there's a need or some type of initiative, if we have enough staffing and/or we have the modified patrol positions who cover our peak time, we'll send one or two of them to attend. So we make sure we continue to have, maintain staffing here in town, along with sending personnel elsewhere. However, we would be, having two dedicated people would allow us to send them and leave everybody in town.
Could that grant also be used for new hire? And their role be this?
Yes. Yes, sir. They could. That's definitely an option.
We've got grants before, but those was federal? Is it?
Yes, sir.
Have we ever had a governor's grant before?
We have. Actually, I was under one, and to my knowledge, it was one of the first ones that the town received, and it was back under, it was around 2004 in that timeframe. I was under the Governor's Highway Safety Program grant way back when. And then I think we have had at least one since then. Amy's shaking her head. So we've had at least one other one through the state since then. We have applied before, and we have not been accepted. I think that was two years ago. And for whatever reason, you know, the state has their reason when they're going through. There's a lot of agencies out there who are applying. And, but I feel like this was a great year for us, being the growth that we have, not only here in Roseville, but Wake County. And again, being that we support other municipalities here in Wake County, I thought this was a good year for us to reach back out and see if we can get some assistance to move forward with this program. If I can get a calendar for every one of y'all, I will, so y'all can have a picture of us up there. Lastly, is what's coming up. We have some events coming up. There are Friday, March 14th is tentative, depending on weather, picnic with police at Main Street Park from 12 to 2:00. We are going to be assisting Parks and Rec with April Autism Awareness Month. They'll kick off with Wednesday, April 2nd, Wear Blue Day. So all of staff is, if you have some blue, recommended to wear blue that day and support. Saturday, April 5th will be Rec Day. We'll have a vehicle out for Autism Awareness Month at the Redford Place Park. June and his group, they're going to, we're going to provide the vehicle, and then they're going to have some kids where they can donate some money. We can paint their hands. And they'll be, they'll be able to put them on the patrol cars. So we're hoping to have it full. And we're not just going to do one event. There are several other events. We may have it out for Easter event over at Roseville Middle School, and I can get those dates, or have June send them out to you. But there's going to be several events. We may just have it out at Food Line in the evening when people are shopping, and they want to come by, and they would like to donate, and all the proceeds will go to the North Carolina Autism Association. Another picnic with police is tentative, April 7th, Main Street Park. And then we have a new event that we want to try. It's an event with the commissioners. The names will be RTVD at this time. It'll be April 19th at Artisan Beer and Cheese from 11:00 to 12:00. So we're excited.
Security with the commissioners and police department.
There you go. Excellent name. Police come out and sit down with myself, some of my staff, and some of the commissioners on that day. As we get closer to the date, we'll be publicizing some more about the event. And then Saturday, May 17th is our bike rodeo at Redford Place Park. And then lastly, we wanted to try to get this out early this year. Our camp kids this year will be June 23rd through the 27th. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
The Top Cops Grant, you heard anything on that? Is that being on hold or anything?
The last I have seen correspond, because they have been pretty good. The feds have been pretty good about sending out communication. It's still on hold, but I think we're going to be okay. Luckily, Captain Haynes and Amy, they were able to submit a reimbursement the week prior. So I believe we were, so we were able to obtain those funds prior to the lockdown. So we wouldn't have to, and we're now on the backside of our, what we're getting. So the next one will be, I think, within a few months, be around April. So I'm hoping by April, all this will be cleared up, and our type of grant will continue moving forward.
Good news.
Yes, sir.
Is there any cause association with camp kids?
We have a grant for that through Wake County ABC. And they, we were, we've actually, another grant to let you all know, and I should have put it in here. I apologize. We have applied. It was, this one kind of drug on. This one, we applied back in October of last year. Christina reapplied for this grant for more funds, and we were accepted for another one. So we received somewhere right around $29,000 for, to continue with our camp kid program. So we're excited for that.
How many kids is that?
It varies. This past year, I want to say we had 30, around 30 kids.
And max you're looking for this year?
50. Forty, 45 to 50 is usually our threshold.
What ages?
13. Well, I think they took ages out. I think we're looking for middle school age.
Middle school.
So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids. We would also like to thank our partner, Roseville Charter Academy. They have allowed us for the last several years, host us for having our event there. So they'll give us two classrooms, allow us to have full use of the gymnasium and the field that they have there. So we appreciate them for their partnership.
I'm sorry, was that sixth and seventh graders?
And eighth.
Rising sixth, seventh, and eighth?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Okay.
And then we also, we have camp counselors. They're 15 up, 16 up age group. So if you have or know children who need community service hours, please tell them to apply. It fills up really quick. Apparently, there's a lot of schools in the area who require community service hours. So last year, we topped out, I think, the first day we had enough counselors. So if you know of anybody that's looking for community service hours, please send them my way. Look for Communication, Facebook, or Newsglass. Katie will get that out.
Yeah.
You also shared that with the high school, right? About the community, community service hours?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's good. Now, that was ABC grant, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, you know, they worked really hard. I think Christina worked hard before she came over here on that. Really, really, this ABC grant is supposed to be kind of an ABC-type programs, you know, ABC alcohol prevention programs. But, you know, we worked really hard to get this program. And y'all may know Brian Hicks and several on the board that lives here in Roseville too. So I think, I think we'll do a good job of teaching them about alcohol, a little bit, doing that, but not much, but...
This year, this past year, we had mad come in. They did a classroom portion. Sad came in. They did a portion. We had a guest speaker, one that the kids, at the end, we had them write, you know, who was your, what was your favorite part about camping? Her name popped up, and that was a lady here in town who, we lost her son to an overdose. So she was very impactful to the children. And so we're hoping to get her back this year. So she did a phenomenal job. So we do, we provide a lot of educational, we play a lot of games, team building exercises in there with the children. But we also do a lot of educational pieces. PO Healthcare comes in to educate as well. So it's a good pact. We, and I think all the kids get a lot out of it. That's our goal.
That's good. Do we have, or do you have the, what is that antidote for overdose that?
Narcan.
Do y'all have that?
We do.
Okay.
And we just received our annual training on it. Lieutenant Myers is our instructor for the Narcan. And we just received, everyone in the agency received their, so they were getting close to expire. So we got a new batch in, and then we had our annual training on policy and procedure, and then how to use it.
That's good, because I think that could save a life for sure, because you got to do it immediately. And, you know, if you don't have it, then you can't do it.
Absolutely. Or, you know, as y'all know, and I know Commissioner Long and town manager know, because they're in our public safety meetings, listening to how busy our EMS is in this county. And sometimes they're coming from Garner to a call in Roseville. So if it isn't overdose, you know, our officers are equipped, you know, to be able to render aid immediately. So it is good. I'm glad they all have it.
That's good. Because, you know, I know one of the stories I was hearing today, somebody pulled up to the hospital, and they got it just in time. But, you know, we're a long ways from hospital. So I could see them pulling up in the police station and, you know, having to do something really there. So that's good to hear. It's good to hear.
Can I ask you a quick question about the stats? I know there have been some fluctuating up and down in different areas. Is there one area that you've seen that's grown more that's concerning to you, that you like to get ahead of as far as for the citizens?
No, there was, you know...
I saw vandalism of, you know, the other crimes. Thank God, the Part 1 is down. I mean, Part 1 was up, excuse me, but Part 2 was down. So, you know, I'm just curious, are you seeing a trend that we need to get ahead of?
We are definitely trending upwards. And I don't know what to chalk that up to, other than we have a, as y'all know, we're growing, and we have an influx of people. And then with the commercial pieces that are coming online, like as we speak, with Cowellstone, the Publix is not far behind, and their whole shopping center with all their pieces that they have coming in now, that's going to change, that changes things. At the traffic pattern, you know, we're up in collisions, and majority of those are, Lewisburg and NC96 was, has been the top producer of those collisions for the past couple of years. This year has moved back to Lewisburg and Young Street. We've had more collisions right in there. But it's tit for tat. They're still really close with Lewisburg and NC96. So again, being there's a lot of traffic, we feel like a dedicated traffic unit to be able to continue to educate the public on our traffic laws that we have through enforcement and educational pieces, the high school. We want to get more involved with the Drivers Ed program and educate our young drivers at the high school, and put on any type of classes or clinics that we can over there. And I think having dedicated people to do so and the resources that we would be able to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we have lights at Young Street and the bypass, which, but that one up there, 96 and the bypass, is dark. I mean, you don't know what you're doing up there. It's so dark up there. And I think that could be one of the problems up there. Because, you know, when I go through there, I know I got to be really careful to find out which, because you can't make a left, you can make only a right now. But it's just so dark. And maybe that's something we can look at is, you know, we don't have lights at that intersection at all.
We do not. And we did speak to DOT when that intersection was under construction about adding more lighting, because folks were coming up, and they were making that left.
Didn't they put some temporary up for a while? Because of that issue with turning, and then they took everything down and...
Yes, sir. Now it's back to how it was prior to the construction. And it's a large intersection.
Yeah.
So from, especially like if you're coming from 96, if you look where it starts to, you know, the other side of 401, with the added lane and barrier in there now, it's a very large intersection. And as y'all know, people are in a hurry, and that light turns yellow, and instead of slowing down, they're speeding up, and they're trying to, you know, they're trying to make the light because they've been in traffic or whatever the case may be. And that's what we've seen the most of, is angle collisions through there. And we still have people turning left.
You do?
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
So with DWI, it's exactly the same from year to year. Do you have repeat offenders? Do you have repeat areas? Do you have, is that something that adds to that, to keep it that even like that?
We do not. I haven't seen repeat offenders, or haven't been told of any that have been repeat. We do catch repeat offenders.
Okay.
But maybe not from our jurisdiction. They've been caught elsewhere last year, you know, within the last couple of years, and then get caught again here in our jurisdiction. But that is an area that we want to work on this year. And we just completed our all-staff meeting to talk about stats from '23 to '24 and how we compared. And that is an area that we want to increase enforcement in. I'm thinking that's an area that we can do better in. And not just Roseville, but that's something that's been mentioned across the state. You know, as far as collisions involving impaired drivers are starting to creep back up. And it's our goal to reduce collisions, and then definitely fatalities involving impaired drivers. So if we can remove them from the roadway, that's our ultimate goal.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, next item, affordable housing development RFP, Burlington, uh, nine, forty-nine fifty Burlington Mills Road. And Michael, I think you want to do that.
Sure.
Is this like an update or?
Uh, yeah, um, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Here to provide an update and also some good news. Um, the committee did kind of um, choose, sort of selected a, a first choice to recommend to the board. Um, so um, we'll uh, get to that in a second. I just wanted to provide some background information um, to bring us up to today. Um, so to recap, uh, back in September, uh, we staff posted a request for proposals uh, to solicit uh, affordable housing project ideas um, to develop uh, the land. You see here, the, the six point four eight acres uh, that are behind Town Hall uh, here, town owned. Um, and uh, the RFP, we, that closed in October and the town received seven proposals overall um, from different affordable housing developers and organizations. Uh, and these proposals showed uh, concepts anywhere from town homes, duplexes, um, to um, uh, even single standing, uh, multifamily, you know, multi-tiered uh, um, units or developments or com, multifamily complexes. So here's kind of the land here, just to see. Um, we um, assembled a team, uh, for a committee of eleven of us to review and evaluate the proposals. We had representation from the town board here, um, representation from staff, uh, myself, uh, the town manager, our planning director and um, also another member of the planning staff. Um, um, a resident, uh, former commissioner, Sheila Sutton, um, helped us. We did have two uh, individuals who live in the Barrington subdivision next door. So if we go back here to the left there, um, that, that new neighborhood, kind of where it's um, Barrington Hall Drive and Lindsay's Run. So we wanted to kind of get their input and, and have them serve on the committee as well. Um, and um, and also we relied heavily on um, uh, Mark Pearlman, who's a division director from um, uh, Wake County Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization. He was a great help. Uh, I think as we move forward too, we'll, we'll rely a lot on Wake County's help for this um, project. And then also um, Aaron, who's with TPMA, um, they're the consultant out of um, Indianapolis, I think, that is working with us to develop our affordable housing plan. So we'll hear more about that, I think, in the coming months as that's kind of, that project's kind of coming to a close as well. Um, so uh, there's the group there. Um, and uh, so firms submitted proposals, uh, and they were evaluated on, on the, you know, criteria that was mentioned in the RFP. Um, some of that's here, you can see. Um, and, and just looking at familiarity um, with the area, overall qualifications, project experience, um, past successes, um, their approach and understanding of the project uh, and their financial model and things like that. Um, of the seven proposals that we initially reviewed, um, the team chose three finalists to engage with further uh, by sending additional questions and uh, hosting virtual interviews. Um, and some of these additional questions and interviews centered around, um, you know, how the project fits in with the surrounding neighborhood, that Barrington neighborhood. So the, the two residents of Barrington had some questions, um, and we were able to ask those. Um, we asked the, the, the three finalists to further describe, you know, a project that they might be working on right now that's similar, uh, maybe nearby, something that was very similar to what we're seeking to do here. Um, and we had some clarification questions around the level of affordability, um, and their model that they use to, to provide affordable housing and things like that. Um, and I hesitate to go into too much detail about that. I'm sort of not an expert on affordable housing. Um, but uh, we did have some experts on the team and if there are further questions about that, um, we can, um, I can call on them and, and get those answers to you. Um, but this, I, I just wanted to kind of um, talk through the process. Uh, and, and so there's nothing in your packets uh, tonight, because we just kind of wrapped this up at the end of last week uh, where I was, why I was able to hear back from each of the committee members, um, who kind of ranked um, these three finalists. And um, and ultimately the group chose um, to move forward with Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. Um, and, and that's the recommendation we received and kind of coming in a close second is um, True Homes. So um, the group felt that Habitat uh, would be the best choice to bring to the board due to their local knowledge and experience. Um, being a local nonprofit partner in this realm, in this, in this affordable housing realm. Um, just um, some other things involved sort of the lower density of the project um, there and uh, the compatibility with the neighboring Barrington subdivision, uh, and also the homeownership model that they kind of offer. Um, you know, one of the things is that they require the homeowners to put in two hundred hours of sweat equity uh, and things like that. So, so this was their first choice. Um, I can show you some of their, um, when they submitted their proposal, here's one of their ideas. Uh, they submitted two ideas and they really expressed that they'd be really flexible. They've done this before. Um, they've done this in Wake County with other municipalities. Um, they're flexible in working with us too, uh, you know, on that, that style of town home. Um, and, and kind of what the look and feel would be. Uh, so here's one idea, this cottage style neighborhood that they proposed. This would be about sixteen units. And then um, another one here, uh, were these two-story townhomes, um, similar to the townhomes that, that are in the Barrington Hall neighborhood to the north. So I think tonight, um, the, the ask of the board is really um, just if you were in agreement um, to, to direct staff to engage with Habitat and continue to um, talk with them. This is just kind of the beginning of the process. Um, uh, if you direct staff to, to do so, we can um, reach out to Habitat, start working on contract negotiations and MOU or whatever a type of development agreement might look like for this. Again, we'll rely heavily on, on, on Mark with Wake County, how they do these kind of things. Um, of course, you know, on, on our town attorney as well. Um, I think this, this would just kind of say, hey, yes, we, we're okay with doing this. Uh, let's start talking to them. Um, my thought too was that we could, we can engage in conversations and maybe a few months go by and it doesn't work out. For whatever reason, we've, we're not able to do, they're not able to do what they kind of said and we aren't getting what we want. And so that's where we can maybe um, uh, reach back out to our second choice, where our second choice maybe is on standby for a few months as, as we continue to go through this process.
So how many do you have in this layout?
This one, uh, twenty.
And then what's, can we, can we see the previous one?
Yeah. And again, very, just kind of.
Right.
Initial thoughts.
Yeah, well, but my thought with that too, and I know we're going way too far into it with this, what I'm going to say. But my thought with this process is if you come into something that's, that looks unique or is laid out unique where you could use that pattern other places. I, I mean, the one after this, you get more units and everything else, but it's their townhomes. At the end of the day, we have those already. I know these are affordable, what I'm just saying. They look the same as everything else. If you have something that you can, we're looking for, I guess, diversity of what you're offering. And I feel like that the other ones give you a different look, give you something else to look, you know, it's a different feel.
Yeah.
Um.
Here's the um.
How close, how close was the ranking?
Uh.
It, you know.
I mean it.
I mean, if, if, if was, was a fine line between, between them or how, you know, words.
Yeah.
You know, like Paul, Paul makes a good point that the second one has more units.
Yeah.
So you have more affordables.
Here's the second one.
And the second one has more different models, you know, I think.
Yep.
I think they had like forty-some, thirty-nine different models. They can.
Right.
Add diversity to it. And Habitat is sort of same, right?
Yeah, I think True Homes was, is a private entity. So you're, take that into account. Um, they can do different things and, and might, and seem to have more flexibility. Um, building, and had, have different styles across the, the state. Um, so that is one thing to take into consideration.
Yeah.
And both of those are just like workforce affordable, right? They're not, like, they're not senior homes.
No, they're not senior homes. Um, they're just offered at the, uh, at least the eighty percent of um.
AMI.
AMI and then.
And we haven't really seen a whole lot on the proposals themselves. You know, I saw one of the questions, you know, what happens after the first owner? What happens five, ten, fifteen years? We haven't seen any of that. So um, we're kind of in the dark as opposed to what your committee really looked at and, and what decisions were made on that.
Um, so with regards to that question, um, we know specifically that Habitat had the best longevity with that because they have um, first right of refusal for when the home, um, when a, when a person passes away or they want to sell it. And so they typically buy the home back and um, transition it to someone who was already in their program. Also Habitat spoke about being flexible on how we kind of look at those criteria since we want to do something that's catered towards seniors, cause they definitely have those populations in, in their system. And so we could continue to work with them on that. And so when it comes to our wanting to work with Habitat, um, or True Homes, it's really, let's keep having that conversation, but let's just talk with you instead of us having two days, three days where we talk with four people and then talk with four people again, talk with four people again, if that makes sense. And so um, we'll, we can definitely get more information about that and any other thing um, that you think we need to focus on specifically and see if there's something that's achievable with that. It just helps us be a little bit more pointed as staff when we try to bring back that um, that solution that'll take us forward.
So from a True Homes and Habitat for Humanity perspective, the Habitat for Humanity is sixteen to twenty homes and the True Homes was thirty-four to thirty-eight, if I read that correctly. That's a big number in terms of availability of homes and.
Yeah.
Traffic and parking, et cetera, et cetera. Um, was that one of the reasons as far as the determination?
Um, I think so. I think, um, so the ones that kind of didn't, the three, the three or four that didn't make the cut so, to sort of the next round, they were all proposing um, up, upwards of like eighty to a hundred and twenty units.
So it was.
So right away, we kind of took out the big three-story, multi-family buildings that had a hundred to a hundred and twenty units. And I think density was a main factor and just thinking about that density on this six acres there in town. Um, and as we kind of came down to, to the, the finalists, um, we were looking at their, their models of homeownership. Um, one, you know, we really liked, or the, the team really liked this idea of homeownership as opposed to rentals. Um, where, where somebody owns the home. Um, and I think um, the surrounding neighborhood, the representatives of the surrounding neighborhood liked, liked that idea more, like lower density, liked the idea of owners rather, rather than renters. Um, but yeah, I think density came into play and, and you know, our consultant kind of put it this way too. He said, well, if you guys are looking to do a lot of affordable housing, then maybe higher density is a plus. Maybe you want fifty, because now you're offering fifty affordable units in your community. Or higher density could be a, a negative if you look at it that way, where some of the stuff I talked about, like traffic and fitting in with the surrounding neighborhood. So it's either, um, it could go either way, a, as you look at, you know, offering affordable units to you in your community. Do you want to offer a lot more or do you want to keep it kind of low in management?
Yeah, and you're also talking about where this is located at too.
Absolutely.
You're not on the bypass. You're in the middle of downtown. So I mean, that's, that's a big difference.
I think, I think, I think what the board is asking is they want to see the details.
Okay.
And I, didn't have a pro and con sheet? Did I see a pro and con? You had pro and con sheets in the head.
Yeah.
Did you have a ranking table or something?
Um, yeah. Uh, basically, um, we did a comparison sheet. And again, it's, it's just everybody's kind of on the committee, their um, rankings, their um, opinions, their, you know, their feelings about having the, reviewing the proposals and going through the interviews. And this is where the group kind of overwhelmingly chose Habitat and.
So it was overwhelmingly?
Well, as their first choice, yes, with a, with True Homes, not, not too much bad being said about True Homes either. But there was a clear top two with, with Habitat being a clear one.
How much did Habitat say their homes was going to cost?
Uh, I mean, it's, I can't remember if they threw out a number.
Cost, cost.
Yeah, um.
Excuse me.
They each described that and it's, it's where, you know.
Yeah, I, I think True Homes is the one that had a pretty good program. They would try to get more funding from other people.
Yep.
And their target was to get it down to two hundred thousand if they got.
Yeah.
If they got assistance from the state.
Right.
Assistance from the county and stuff.
Yeah, you're building them at that level, you know.
And then, you know, we'd, it, I think all of them was, was around three hundred thousand.
That, that's to be expected, right?
All of them was around three hundred thousand, then it come down some by dedicating a land, you know, bringing about two seven and then, you know. But I think Habitat was, they were kind of, they didn't, they didn't have these other, they weren't going to get it down too much, I don't think.
They do a land lease model.
Yeah.
So you, you pay for the home.
Okay.
At a low interest, low mortgage rate.
With a lower mortgage rate. And so you end up paying less um, out of pocket, but you don't own the actual land.
They finance their own, don't they? Or do?
Yes.
Habitat does.
Mm-hmm. And so you finance the home, um, that's, and since you're not paying for the land and they retain that through the land lease, that's what helps with the affordability. Um, and unlike others, where they keep the land lease, um, where they have the land lease, one thing that I liked about it personally was that they allow for generational wealth building through the um, retaining of um, the building of the equity in, in the actual home. And so you can actually, you leave with something where in some places where you could move into the, you don't really leave with the equity that you build over time. Um, and so that comes with homeownership as well, which is an upside.
And you got a key question. I mean, the two that we're seeing are more workforce homes. I mean, two and three-story townhomes are not for seniors. Um, you know, that raises the issue about traffic. It's not a ton of homes, so it's not a ton of traffic, but it is on Main Street. And we had that issue recently where we, we're not happy about that. And you know, we've got thousands of apartments within a five-minute radius of where we are, which are available for workforce. So it's, it's a seminal question to me is, are we looking for homes for the workforce or are we looking for affordable housing for our senior community?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, I, I think the board's just going to make informed decision. And um, you know, you guys put all the homework in, you got all the numbers. Maybe, can we do it at a work session? Put it on a work session count? That, you know, you can give, give everybody all the information a week before and, you know, and come in and ask their questions and figure these things out. But I think it needs to be, they need to, they need to have the information, I think. Y'all, y'all agree or not?
I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, like it, it doesn't, not super detailed. It has to be just a summary, just a.
Yeah.
Yeah, an overview.
Right.
And I don't think we got a lot of, if, if I remember, you had pros and cons sheet, you had a.
Yeah.
You had a.
I, I remember us looking at these already as well, like as well individually anyways and, and sending that pros and cons in already. So, I mean.
I did that summary packet that was sent out a couple of months ago.
And all that's the same, it's just, it's just evaluation sheets and the pros and cons and stuff.
It's really just seeing comments that the group made and seeing their ranking and the conclusion with what it came to tonight, you know, with Habitat and then True Homes.
Yeah.
So we can provide that, um, and the, all, the, the, um, the full proposal, you know, and any, any, anything and everything. Um, to schedule something, to talk.
And I don't even know if, I mean, you have seven of them. I mean, you don't need, I don't think you need, well.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, but I don't think you need all of them. You need, you guys have already got it down to the top two. I mean, if you had like maybe a top four at them, I don't even know if you need that.
I, I think the three, we only evaluate three.
Yeah.
So it'd be the top three.
We interviewed three.
Yeah, cause the others, you're right. There were higher density, multi-story, you know, complexes that were, that were truly apartments, which I think, I mean, I don't need to see those. But the, like you said, the top three, definitely, they're more akin to ownership and then, you know, the really, which way do we want to go? Do we want to do, you know, workforce housing or do we do want to do senior housing? I mean, that's kind of a key question.
It seems like at one point, there was a discussion of having a discussion with the builder, developer of so much being worked. builder, developer of so much being workforce and so much being senior housing. So that is an option.
That would be a perfect combination.
Yeah. I think...
I think with true it was.
Yeah, and I think all developers expressed that, that they were flexible to work with the town board. And that's where you kind of begin to really have these conversations about what you want to see on that site, especially if you're providing the land. So that's why, yeah, there'd be that engagement process of talking through and like, hey, we want 50% of these units to be for seniors and 50% to be for teachers and 50% to be for police, you know? And if they can't do that, then we go back to the drawing board and find somebody that we can't, that want, that does what we want, I guess. And so...
I see why not with it all still being affordable for our teachers, our police, our FD, as well as seniors that want homeownership as well.
Yeah. And we, and if you recall, the, the RFP was kind of vague in that sense where we kind of didn't know, we didn't have a vision for specifically what we wanted to see there yet, you know?
Yes, sir.
This many units are senior housing only. So we kind of left it out there pretty vague saying, we're looking for affordable housing project ideas, whether it's workforce or senior or apartments or townhomes or duplexes or single family homes. And, and this is what came, the seven or what came back, so.
Okay. Any other question? So in summary, I think, if everybody's okay, Paul, if you're okay, the three today evaluated, give you all the information, pros and cons that they came up with, especially the, the valuation sheets and stuff. Can we get it? I don't know what next workshop looks like, but we can get it on a workshop coming up, I think it'd be good. And it may be a quick workshop if everybody gets all the information and, but I, I really think, I really think they need to have opportunity to ask questions and maybe to make some decisions too, because I think, you know, like Commissioner Paul says, you know, it could be, it could be retirement, it could be workforce, it could be, you know, something else.
Well, and that's a good point.
All these, all these are homes for sale. I know, I know, I was thinking all three of them. So is True Homes, are they for sale, if they were for sale or not?
Yeah, Habitat and True Homes were for sale.
So I think we eliminated all the rental property.
Right.
Is that right?
Is that third one, rental property?
Third one was, appeared to us that it was a leasing model.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Where the...
And it's, and with that being said, is it also around...
Yeah, the third one's a foundation, I think.
Is it still the 30, the 30, 36 to 38 townhomes or whatever they were presenting?
Yeah, the third one was...
It was still in that sweet spot?
Thirty-six units, 17 duplexes. So, the one thing, if we have this discussion, I'm not equipped to answer real tough questions about financial models and things like that. So I think, I would recommend we invite Mark Perlman from Wake County, if he's available, and Aaron from our consultant.
We can do that.
Again, if, to, yeah, so we'll just...
We'll make sure the necessary people are here. That's fair.
Questions and so you, so everybody can really...
Yeah, I think, I think Mark, Mark is most important. I think, I think Aaron, from what I got, they, they was on the rental side of it. They thought these supposed to be, sheets should be rentals and, you know, we need rental properties and stuff like that, which is not our vision, I don't think. So Mark is very important, I think.
Yeah.
I really do.
And the financials.
But you know, from Aaron's perspective, we need more rental property in town.
Yeah.
Right.
He doesn't live here.
He doesn't live here.
No. We don't need that.
Homeownership.
But I don't know if there'd be anybody else on the, you know, to hear the different viewpoints too, or if that's just in the packet, you know, from the residents.
When you, when you say viewpoints, what do you mean specifically?
Um, you know, like the residents of Barrington neighborhood, they had their own kind of reasons for why they chose what they did.
I would be interested in seeing their, their viewpoints.
Yeah. So that'll be in writing, I guess.
Okay.
But if there's questions about that, I'm trying to think, how do you interact with, you know, as questions come up? Or if you have it in front of you, is that okay with Mark there?
Well, you can, I mean, it's, it's open meeting, so you can make sure they're aware we're going to be meeting on if they want to come. And the board can always ask some questions if they want to.
We can maybe invite the committee to that work session or something.
But I, I think, I think the takeaway from the neighborhood, and you know, they went out and had a neighborhood meeting, right? Didn't have a neighborhood meeting and talked to the neighbors and got input from everybody. And the two things they were mainly, that I heard was they didn't particularly want rental. And they didn't particularly want anything really high.
Right.
They wanted, they didn't want anything three or four stories high right next to them.
Very respectful.
That was it.
The biggest thing I don't want to do is I don't want to discount the committee we had together. Like, we don't need to do that either because that, why would we put a committee together and waste their time if we're not going to listen to what their suggestion is? So I think we go into it looking at the final details. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel with this thing.
And keep in mind, we, we did take the conversation that we had with you all back to the committee. And so they were informed with your opinions, the things you previously stated that you all wanted to see.
Yeah, I think, I think overall they were, I think they were somewhat okay with all three, the three finals. It was, they eliminated, they didn't want those big things and stuff, you know, the real dense things, the real, the rental apartments and stuff, you know? Are we good, you think?
Yeah. The only other thing I would encourage you all to think about when it comes to it is the ongoing support of the actual program. When the people move in, the transition from homeowner to homeowner and ensuring that we go with someone that can be able to stand up that program as well, the ongoing support.
Does it include that packet, like in regards to what True...
Yes, and so that was the biggest thing about Habitat is the, the actual program and longevity. A lot of, a lot of the people that threw their name in the hat, for lack of better words, don't have that program improving longevity to be able to pivot and provide the service and support. What we don't want to do is create a community that doesn't have a solidified HOA, that turns into a HOA problem, that turns into us, we know our HOA problems. And so to where it provides that ongoing support once people get in. And so that's the only other thing and I would, that's the other thing that arose from the conversation and from the feedback that contributed to them looking a particular direction because in the interviews and presentations, you can judge from the flow of them, that some people knew what they were doing, some people want to do something new.
I understand.
And that's, y'all see presentations all the time. And then it's a, it's a fine line between wanting to do something new and knowing what you're doing. And so those are things that we really want to encourage. I really want to encourage you all to think about so that we can be super strategic with it and make sure it's something that we go with and doesn't, and remain, continues to be sustainable year after year after year, long after us. And so that's the only other thing that I see, that I didn't hear mentioned, that did come up in conversation as we kind of look at the longevity of that as the actual program as well. But we'll bring in the experts and bring that information back before you and bring in all the things, bring package of information for you.
And I will say that you will get the top three, but the top two were selected for a lot of thought went into it.
Yes.
So that third one, which was even stated that they didn't rank as high as the other two, I wouldn't spend a whole bunch of time personally on that one, knowing the discussions that were had and the reasons that were, we chose, those top two were chosen.
Respect.
Just saying, don't spend a lot of time on that.
Mm-hmm. Well, you, it was already said it was a lease option, right? That was, yeah, so.
That's how it was described by Wake County.
I'd like to say thank you for the work that you, the committee has done. I mean, this, to bring it back in a, in a timely fashion, I think has been good. I don't think we've established a timeline for this program, this, this thing to be established. So I know that's kicking the can a little bit farther down the road, but I think more than anything is just being informed in regards to what Habitat for Humanity and what True can do from those differences. I think it's very important for us to just to delineate, so I appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Town attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You'll see your place is, there is a potential form of motion to go into closed session this evening and want to bring you up to speed on latest developments in a pending case with the town of Roseville. That's all I have for you.
Town manager.
Have a few updates for you. We, we are moving into budget season. And so I wanted to just remind you that on the next work session will be the budget work session that starts at noon. Christina will be rolling out communications about that and that'll be noon until myself, Amy and the department head team, we're putting together the, the flow of the day to be able to talk through some of the priorities and things that we're seeing. I've been doing pre-work with the departments, asking them what they see to be their operational organizational goals for that department based on looking ahead, using foresight and then also getting updates from them on those key deliverables, budgetary deliverables and priorities for this year to be able to bring that before you as well. And so you'll get a status update on things and then we'll do some looking ahead as to what we see as those things that are on the immediate horizon and do that. Separate, separate to that, we're continuing to work on a strategic plan. Myself and Steven have been meeting with department heads and we're looking at making those more data, continuing to be, making, continuing to make decisions that are data-driven. And so those are things that we're working through and also continue the implementation of the strategic plan. We've also been applying to some different grants. We've received some, we've applied to one, Commissioner Long will be happy about, applied to, for, I want to say $35,000 towards cybersecurity grant. We had someone that helped us with that. We met with Central Ponds about it, spoke with someone who was previously awarded the grant and they had applied for it two years straight and had received it. And so we're optimistic about that and we're hoping that that'll help us be as cutting edge as possible when it comes to technology and cybersecurity in this day and age in which asymmetric terrorist threats are definitely commonplace. And as we continue to grow and we get more people, we kind of move on to the radar. And so I want to make sure that we are equipped with that. We also have applied with some, to some grants and within Parks and Recreation, PD and HR as well to go towards some health and wellness things for staff. This week, I will be heading up to Winston-Salem, myself, our assistant town manager, he's already there now, doing municipal governance one-on-one with North Carolina, the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the UNC School of Government, the North Carolina Central County Managers, North Carolina City County Managers Association. The winter seminars, it's a time where we go and we learn, we talk about different ideas. There'll be several case studies, technology-wise, coming from Garner, Apex and others that are doing innovative things. And so we're looking forward to getting the information and bringing it back. So y'all will be able to contact me via email, Teams, phone, but I will be in Winston-Salem. I'm driving up tonight and I'll be there through Friday morning. I think that pretty much covers all of my major updates. I'll be sending out an email to you that kind of just gives you tons of bullet points, but those are the major ones I wanted to communicate with you and kind of share with the, the public.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good job, man. Appreciate it. About the board, any, any comments from board, anything? I was, I got a meeting next week, 12th and 13th, mayor's meeting. So I'll be gone a couple of days next week. And you say yours is this week?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right. Well, I entertain a motion for closed session for someone.
I move that the board go to closed session to consult with the town attorney and preserve their attorney-client privilege pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318-1183 of the North Carolina General Statutes. Without enliminating the foregoing, the board expects to receive information regarding the town of Roseville versus Granite Acres MHC LLC.
Have a motion second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose. So we are taking a recess in the closed session and we will be back. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with back in open session.
(laughing)
Okay, we are back in open session. We got a report from an attorney about an item that we asked for follow-up on. No action taken by the board, so with that, I don't think we have any other business. So if anybody got anything they want to say before we end?